We'll go ahead and start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder for everyone to silence their cell phones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Craig is here today if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. And I would consider a motion to amend the agenda to correct the parcel number and abatement amount for item 6A.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion to amend item number six to correct the parcel number and abatement amount for 6A to parcel number 86249 in the amount of $616.33.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to amend the agenda passes unanimously, so now I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And that takes us to item two, to approve the commission meeting minutes from October 15th, 2019.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $4,466,058.29.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Commissioner Heiburger.
The Capitol project, which is our jail, was over $3 million of that total.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, you'll see that there are reports on the Minnehaha County Abandoned Cemetery Board for September 2019. And then we have a corrected auditor's account with the county treasurer for June 2018. And then there are a number of other auditor's accounts there. Since these are items that had been before the commission in the past as they related to the treasurer's report, I just thought I'd see if there are any questions this morning about any of those. Commissioner Bennigan.
I guess my only question is, is it's been brought to our attention that there's a needed-to-balance, almost line item at some of those reports. And I'm wondering if there's a reason for that?
Is somebody from the auditor's office or the treasurer's office that wants to address that?
There's adjustments made, but there really is no explanation.
Are you referencing the reference to unreconciled differences?
Yep.
Good morning Commissioners, Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. Those differences are truly unidentified variances between the book balance and the reconciled bank balance.
Is there any explanation? I mean, that's pretty unusual.
We, through June, or through, excuse me, the first month that shows a variance, I believe, is August or September. And up until that point, we had no variances, so it is very unusual when we've had, that we've ever had an unreconciled difference.
Commissioner Karski.
We had this conversation a little bit last week, and there is a lot of money that goes through those accounts, but I know that the city, from my understanding, doesn't balance the cash 100 percent. I mean, when you look at the ratio, it's very, very small. Am I wrong in assuming that, or my understanding of that, that it's not totally out of line and that even the city has a small balance like this that's unreconciled every month?
That is, that is correct. And our strategy in getting caught up with all this reconciliation was that we were trying to establish a consistent unreconciled difference, if you will. And if we could get to a consistent amount, we would make an adjustment to write it off. In this case, our book balance is actually lower than the reconciled bank balance, so it implies that there's some unrecorded receipt of some sort. And so we would actually be increasing the cash balance on our books if we were to just record this difference.
Heiburger. Make a note again, which anybody who's looking at the agenda can see, is that these bank reconciliations go back to July of 2018, and they go through July of 2008, or December of 2018. And so we are still almost, well, we're 10 months behind still at this point, which the treasurer's office is trying to rectify.
Yes. And the treasurer's office has, through the end of last week, turned in reconciliations through April of 2019. And you will see those reports at next week's commission meeting to get us up through April. They've also, they've got reconciliations in process for the remaining months that are outstanding right now, still working on some unreconciled differences in those reports as well.
Madam Chair, I would just say I think this is good progress. I'm glad to see these reports come in. I'm interested in making sure we figure out what, what little bumps we're having on, on that, and thanks, Kim.
Anything else? Any other comments, questions? Well, I would agree, this is, you know, an issue that we have been addressing and working with, trying to get the treasurer's reconciliation to the auditor's office, so we can meet, all meet our obligations under state law to get these reports to us. So it is good progress to be up now through the end of the year. I mean, I think it is difficult anytime you're playing catch-up like that to track down these unreconciled differences. That's one of the reasons that it's really important to do these on a monthly basis. And so we look forward to getting the rest of those reports and getting us back on track so that we can be doing it on a monthly basis and having a better opportunity to track down differences in cash reporting, so. But it is good news that we're, the differences is to the benefit of the taxpayers, to the benefit of the counties, so. Which is, which is in line with what the state auditor's legislative audit also found when they, they brought, did their own reconciliation through the end of 2018. So we have some reason to believe that a couple people have looked at this and that they're all kind of, all the findings are falling along that same track, at least, so. And we appreciate all the work that everyone has done in the treasurer's office and the auditor's office to get us to the point we are, and we look forward to getting the remainder of those reports in the next couple of weeks.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth?
I do have one other question. I noticed that we have quite a few bad checks, and, you know, we, we take them off the list after a certain amount of time. But I'd like to refresh my memory, what do we do about those bad checks? Maybe Kim or Pam could let us know. Do we try to collect those bad checks? What do we do? I mean, there's just a few thousand dollars, but...
Kelly and I, how, for the treasurer's office, we do try to collect those. We, when we get an NSF check back, we do call them right away with a phone number that they have provided on their phone, whether their mailbox may be full, or they don't answer. And then I have been sending out just a letter, if I hadn't, and explaining to them, I have tried calling them. So some people have come in and paid. After a certain period of time, we do go and put them on. I know Amy has, goes and sends out an affidavit of mailing letter to them explaining about their NSF check. And then it, there's a process, then we issue a warrant out for their arrest for the NSF check. And, and then it goes up, and we can get it onto a collection for the cars, so that when they come in and do their car titling, they'll be showing a collection out on there.
Madam Chair, so if they write a badge...
Some of them just don't come in and pay out.
Do we, do we give them an additional charge for...
It's a $40 NSF fee on top of whatever check that we get back. And if it happens to be a property tax check that comes back, we reverse their tax payment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, that takes us to item five, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
All moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. It is time for our annual presentation on our health and our dental insurance. Thank you, Trish. All right. As you remember, we're a self-insured plan, so we take in the revenue from premium contributions from both employees and then from the county, and use those funds to operate our own insurance plan. So we determine what the coverage level will be, what kind of coverage or healthcare issues we'll cover as part of the plan. Every year when we look at this, there are several factors we look at to determine what we should do for premium increases the following year. We look at our current claims. We try to determine what we expect claims will be in the upcoming year. We also consider the premiums we pay for our stop-loss insurance, which is our reinsurance. And then we look at the administrative fees that we pay for operating the plan. We do that analysis for health and dental separately. Even though health is the bigger one, I'm going to start with dental because it's fairly straightforward this year. Every year you see these charts, I give you five years of history. So in the columns in front of you, you'll see the dental claims since 2014 through what we're anticipating will end 2019. In addition, you see a column for our admin fees. So if you go down to the annualized line under plan year, you see that we're anticipating ending our year around $407,000 in dental claims, and we'll have paid about $15,000 in administrative fees for the year. Projecting the claims for the future is always the tricky part. What we look at is trend, our own trend, what dental trends tend to be. If you look through those dental claim columns, you'll see that we tend to fluctuate quite a bit. We've had years where we've gone down a significant percentage as well. So this isn't always the easiest process. But over the past three years, we've been averaging about 10 percent. So I'm recommending that we use that for our projected trend for next year. If we do that, we're anticipating that our 2020 expenses will end around $463,000. That's the annual cost. Monthly, we take in revenue currently about $36,000. If you take that 463, and you look at the monthly cost for that, that's around $39,000. The difference is 7 percent. So in order to make that up, I'm recommending a 7 percent increase for dental premiums next year. Any questions on that before we go to health? Same type of, well, let me backtrack, I guess, a bit. If we do that for dental premiums, you'll see that this is what we're anticipating for revenue. The interesting part for me is always looking at, what does that actually mean to our employees per pay period? Dental insurance is fairly affordable, so the increases, even for a family member, or for family insurance, is $1.23 per pay period. You can tell based on this, too, I think it's also interesting to look at how many employees are currently enrolled on the plan for dental insurance. We have about 80 percent of our staff enrolled. For health, the analysis, this follows a very similar process, but we're dealing with larger numbers, and we have a couple more factors, so it tends to be a little bit more tricky. Same basic approach, I'm giving you five years of past data to take a look at the historical trends. That first column reflects net health claims for the past five years. That is the total amount that we incurred after any stop-loss reimbursements for high claim costs. You can see, looking down that column, we've talked about this for the last couple years, that between 2014, 2015, 2016, things were fairly stable, but we had a significant increase for 2017, and an additional increase for 2018. We had hoped that this would stabilize. Honestly, we'd hope to go back closer to trend. When you look at the annualized amount for 2019, you can see that did not occur this year. Over the, since about 2016, we've increased about, or about, experienced about a 52 percent increase in our total health claims. Prescription claims, again, looking down the column, you can see that we've experienced some significant costs in that area as well. Last year, you might remember that I talked to you about a prescription savings plan that we were hoping would help, and it has helped curb the increases, but it didn't provide any miracle cures, and we weren't expecting that either. Stop-loss premiums, again, is our reinsurance, or the premiums that we pay for stop-loss insurance, so that if we have an individual with high claims, we're insulated a little bit from, from that. Because our last few years have been difficult, you can see that we've had a correlating increase for the stop-loss premiums, meaning our premiums are going up significantly in that area as well. The administrative fee is fairly good news. We, we go out and bid that on a contract basis for three-year periods, so we know that we're going to expect about a 3 percent increase for next year, along with maybe growth. I'm anticipating about a 3 to 4 percent increase in that area. So the bottom line is, if you annualize all of our costs for 2019, we anticipate ending the year at about $6.4 million in total costs after any stop-loss reimbursements. Projecting for 2020 is difficult, because the last two years, I've said, we're hopeful we're going to go back closer to trend. I still hope that, because we've had a very unusual year. So for this process, I'm giving you a low and a high estimate. Based on the low estimate, we're anticipating maybe we'd be closer to $3.5 million in increases, or, sorry, in claims again for next year, and ending about 6.4. So what I'm saying is, with good luck, we hope not to have a worse year next year than we've had this year. But it's possible, if we continue to experience the kind of increases that we have, we might have closer to 7.2. At the bottom, similar to how I showed your dental expenses, I'm giving you that same breakdown for the low estimate and the high estimate. Based on the low estimate, we're about 15 percent behind in the premiums for what we would need for revenue for next year. So I'm recommending at least a 15 percent increase. I am recommending a 15 percent increase. But you can see near the bottom that if we were to look at closer to the high end of that estimate, what we would actually require is a 30 percent increase. The reason I'm giving you that figure is so that you have a realistic perspective of what we've been facing, what I anticipate we might be facing again next year. The 15 percent increase is a larger increase than we've had in the past. It's still very possible that our claim experience might go down, so I'm comfortable recommending just the 15 percent for 2020. If you do that, this is what our health premiums will look like for next year. Employees will have about $11.65 increase per pay period for employee only, about $28 for E+1, and closer to $40 for family. Now, that might seem like dire news, but let me give you the silver lining here. I think we offer a great product still. I think overall, in the market, our premiums are affordable, and I think that's reflected by the fact that 76 percent of our employees are taking our health insurance. Also, to give you a little history, this is our premium increases since about 2005 for both Sanford and the Avera network, as well as our dental insurance. And just a reminder, when you see Sanford and Avera in those columns, it's not Sanford's insurance, it's not Avera's insurance, it's Minnehaha County's insurance using those networks. If you look at those increases and trends, if you look back past about the last five years, we're turning about 4 percent increases each year, which I think is enviable for a lot of employers. Even if you go back further and say 10 years, on average, again, a 4 percent increase per year average, so not at all bad. Any questions on the health insurance side?
Commissioner Karski.
Just to follow up on your comment on 4 percent, you're right, most businesses would kill just having 4 percent. So that, that is fantastic, and I'm, you know, you're, as our HR director, thank you for the work you do and the time you put into this, and I'm not trying to play stump the HR director, but curious here. We have 80 percent of our employees on the dental and 76 on the health. I don't know, do you have an attrition rate or a retention factor that you built in? We have open enrollment, I think you said November?
Yep.
November 4th through the 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if we approve these rates, and we lose 4 or 5 percent because they switch to their spouse's plan or whatever, will you come back to us and let us know if we have to take any further action?
Yes, in fact, I'm going to come back and let you know if we need to take any further action at any point in the year. Because of the significant rise, and how steeply that's risen over the past couple years, this, I'll be watching that monthly. I don't want to, I mean, it's very likely you should anticipate another double-digit increase next year, or that would be recommending that, and putting that in the budget, probably for 2020. But if things continue to climb at the rate they are, instead of waiting, we may need to just revisit and talk at some point next year. And as far as attrition rates, if you go back to that 2005, 2006, 2007, you can see that we had some fairly significant increases there. We have been at about 75 to 79 percent of individuals taking our insurance since as long as I've been here. So, or sorry, that's 70 to 75 percent. So when we're looking at 76 percent, I'm not seeing that we've been impacted at all by our premiums. They've gone up a little bit, we've seen some switch in where they're at. We tend to have more people on family insurance than we did 10 years ago, but overall, enrollment really hasn't been impacted.
If I may, Madam Chair, you know, just the fact that if you're on our plan, you can go to Sanford or Avera, you're not, on a lot of plans, you're locked into one or the other, so that is a great benefit.
Yep. You can, you can switch from year to year. Once you choose for the year, you are locked in for that year, but you do have the flexibility to choose each year where you want to go, and you can choose differently for you or your family members, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Over the years, we've had a number of insurance holidays, right?
We have.
And, in other words, if things are going well for us, we, we give our employees a month off or whatever, and, you know, we're not trying to build up a huge fund or anything. We're doing what's necessary to cover it, and we're not the only business with this kind of problem. Health insurance is, well, we asked Dean here, he's an insurance guy, it's going up generally everywhere. And we do our best, and I would also point out that none of us commissioners get healthcare through our plan.
That's true. True on both points.
Other comments, questions? Well, I personally would just like to thank you, because I know you put a lot of work into this and have a few sleepless nights over this whole thing. I mean, this isn't great news. I mean, we all recognize that this is, you know, real dollars out of our employees' pockets. And also out of the county's pocket. I mean, it was a significant increase that we had to budget for this year. But at the same time, I think that, you know, this is the reason you have health insurance. You share your risk with a, with a lot of people, and, you know, some years you're going to have health concerns, and that's why you have insurance. And so, you know, overall, I think that it's been a really great benefit to our employees, and is still very well-priced compared to a lot of products that I see employers offer to their employees. So, you know, it's, it's not great news, and it might not be great news next year, but it is a great benefit, and, and we appreciate all the work that your office does to try to manage it as responsibly as possible.
Thank you. Well, closely tied to all that, part of what we look at, not only is the cost behind the plan, but really what are driving some of those costs, and where can we maybe react to things as we need to? And that leads me into another thing that I'd like to cover with you today, which is our retiree health benefit. Currently, employees are eligible for this retiree health benefit, meaning if they retire with the county, they can stay on the county insurance, as long as they're eligible for state retirement benefits when they retire, so they're truly retirement-eligible. They have 15 years of experience with the county, and they've been on the health plan and contributing those premiums for at least five years prior to the retirement date. You probably remember that we have evaluations done periodically to determine what the cost of offering that benefit is, because there's an implied subsidy for giving premiums to those retirees and offering those benefits to retirees with grouping them in with our younger, currently-employed population. That evaluation came back this year for last year's plan, indicating about, I believe, an annual cost of around $35,000, which doesn't seem like a terribly high cost, that's about 1 percent of our premiums. But if you actually measure the value of that for our youngest employee now through retirement date, the cost of the, offering that benefit is around $859,000. So it can have a significant cost. We talked about this with our employee groups during contract negotiations, we talked about it with the health committee as well. Looking at this, it is becoming an expensive benefit to provide, so we're recommending that we alter it slightly and only make that benefit available to anyone who's employed prior to January 1st of 2020. This is a nice way to balance controlling those costs without actually taking away a benefit that a current employee is eligible for. So if you are supportive of that, that is actually the first request that I'm making for you to do today on the agenda, is to accept the recommendation to limit the retiree health insurance benefit to employees hired on a full-time basis before January 1st, 2020. Are there any questions on that?
Questions?
On that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reduce the healthcare benefit to people hired after 1/1 of 2020.
Point of order? And, if I may?
Sure.
In approving the, the health plan, isn't this just part of it? So one motion, doesn't that cover the whole thing? If we improve the rates, doesn't that include this amendment, or does it have to be done separately?
I think it'd be clear if we went ahead and did it separately. I don't think there's a reason not to do it separately.
Then I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, it's for Commissioner Barth.
When you're hiring new employees, do they ask about their retiree health benefits?
No, they do not.
I didn't think so.
And that's a good point, Commissioner. Right now, the amount of people who are actually taking advantage of that retiree health benefit is around 10 people. So it's not a significant amount of employees who actually end up taking it. Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? So we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Heiburger.
Will this include the Sheriff's Association and the, what do I want to say?
Highway Union, yeah. They both, they both looked, I mean, it was a great opportunity to talk openly with employees who are impacted by this, and they understood the cost, they understood the importance of trying to control the costs for active employees and those premiums. And so, yes, that was successfully negotiated with both unions.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Carrie, I just want to clarify, you indicated that there were only 10 people that were benefiting from this? And the annual cost was $35,000?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So then you need a second motion?
I do.
Or we would like a second motion to approve the 2020 health and dental insurance premiums as proposed.
Yes, please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your work.
Just a few things I'd like to point out before I leave you. We're going to do open enrollment this year through ImmuneS. So for any employees who are listening, it'll be a new opportunity to try that program, which will hopefully be a little bit more seamless. So we're looking to forward to trying something that will hopefully automate and make the process much easier for everyone. Thank you.
Speaking of sleepless nights for you.
Poor Maggie.
Yes, well, we appreciate the work you and Maggie do, and I anticipate that that will be a learning experience, but a successful transition as well. It's got great benefits for folks that take advantage of it, so.
Knocking on wood, thank you.
Thank you.
Poor Olivia, you okay?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, you can go get something to drink if you need.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to item six, abatements recommended for approval. Good morning, Chris Lill. We're looking at parcel 86249, a veterans exemption for 2018 property tax and the amount of $616.33.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chris Lill, equalization. Yeah, before you is another veterans abatement where his award date fell midway through the year, so we're, I'm recommending it for approval. He wasn't qualified on November 1 of '17, but received that award date in '18, so we're recommending that partial exemption for the time of the year that he received it.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That takes us to item seven, notices and requests. authorize the auditor to publish notice of sale by public auction on Iron Planet, October 31st, 2019, for various highway department surplus equipment. DJ Boothie?
Commissioners, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Last week, we had a declaration of surplus for 10 pieces of equipment, and this week we're asking for the permission for the auditor's office to publish the notice of sale. The auction is scheduled through Iron Planet for October 31st. The auction is scheduled through Iron Planet for October 31st.
Commissioner Heiburger?
The comment that we, on the agenda down on number ten is to rescind one item that we had approved last week for this. So we're approving, it's a little out of order, but I think that's the way our flow is.
Okay. That's a good point. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. And item nine, a petition for compromise of lien. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Office. This request for compromise of lien is, is for DPNO four-six-eight-seven and the amount of three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy dollars and eight cents, and DPNO six-three-three-oh-three in the amount of five-hundred-and-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. We're asking that it be, that both be compromised in full with no payment or only insofar as the real property with no payment for parcel four-five-eight-eight-eight, legally described as Lot 12, Block One of Scott and Dunning's addition to City of Sioux Falls. Excuse me. The petitioner was noticed on July 16th from, by the Treasurer's Office, that her property would likely be listed on the upcoming tax deed auction this year unless she was able to pay six years of back taxes totaling six-thousand-four-hundred-and-four dollars and six cents plus interest and penalties. She states that she's been unemployed for three to four years and does not receive any income, and that she's been borrowing money from friends to pay her bills and to try to meet her living expenses. Along with her financial challenges, she is experiencing ongoing health issues and has applied for disability but has not been approved at this time. The balance of each lien represents poor relief and public defender fees. She is asking for your support so that she can move forward with the sale of her home. There is a real estate transaction in progress at this time. The so, the home has been sold for sixty-nine thousand dollars and is expected to close October 31st, 2019. There is no mortgage on the home, and with the sale, she will pay for the property back taxes and satisfy three judgments totaling nineteen-thousand-fifty-one and dollars and sixty cents plus interest and penalties related to those debts. She also hopes to address a recent notice to pay a twenty-thousand-dollar bill for hospital expenses. The petitioner and her realtor were going to attend today, but do not appear to have arrived.
Thank you. Are there questions for Melinda? If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I think that the fact that there are public defender and things on this caused me some pause. Certainly, I can understand people having issues with health and keeping up with those medical bills, but it just causes me pause. It doesn't mean I'm necessarily against it. The other thing, of course, is, and maybe someone else can answer this better than, but if you do your taxes, there's a, you can, you can get money back from the federal government even if you didn't earn it, right? What is that earned? We've seen people that make very small amounts of money that get large refunds based on that federal program. Maybe someone else knows.
Not with enough confidence that I would comment on it, so. Was there a motion hidden in there somewhere?
Not yet.
Okay. Any other comments or motions? Commissioner Karski?
Two things. One, I think it's called redistribution of wealth, but that's a whole nother subject. The second one is, this is up for a tax deed sale. I mean, if we approve the DPNO, we don't, we still get the property taxes, but we don't, aren't able to collect the, the judgment or the lien for the public defender, et cetera. If it goes to a tax deed sale, we would collect everything, I imagine, because we have that lien, unless I don't understand the process correctly. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. So I'm seeing heads nodding. If our attorney would like to comment on that, or if you're able to?
Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think that, as far as my understanding, what Melinda was able to discover the property, all the creditors apparently weren't noticed, and so the property isn't on this year's tax sale, apparently.
That is correct.
And, but would likely be on next year's, because as far as I can see, I don't think there's ever been any property taxes paid on this property since it was purchased by this individual. So because there hasn't been any taxes paid, last year paid was 2012, paid 13. And, and so it would, you know, once the county would take tax deed, then obviously we would, the county typically would seek to then sell the property. And so then it's going to depend on a purchaser coming in and purchasing the property and making the county whole. So the alternative would be, you know, whether or not there's any, there's potentially equity here in the sale. I mean, we haven't seen a closing statement, so we don't know what all the judgments are, you know, but there's potentially equity in the sale. But, you know, anticipating the county being paid is dependent upon after we take the tax deed and then it's placed on the tax sale for the county to offer the property to the public, then you're hoping for a willing buyer to make the county whole with those taxes.
If I may? You know, the one person that gets left out of this conversation is the person wanting to buy this property, who will become, assuming, a property taxpayer and, and hopefully a proud homeowner. So, you know, I'd hate to leave, you talk about a willing buyer, I hate to leave that person out of this conversation or consideration, because if we don't approve this, whoever's hoping to buy a home next week won't have a home to move into, which is, you know, makes it a whole lot more difficult to deny this. Sometimes cash in the hand is worth more than the paper, it's, you know, on a promissory note. So I will make a motion to approve the DPNO as requested.
Just a point of clarification. So are you completely removing the debt and not from the, from the property and the person, not just from the property?
Correct. But the property taxes, assuming, would not be removed from that, they would be paid.
Okay. Commissioner Heiburger looks confused.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I was gonna suggest, before you made a motion, that we remove the, move it, remove it from the home, so they can sell the home, but leave the lien against the person. So then in the future, if there's anything left in her estate, or if she comes into some money, she'd still have to go back and pay this. Am I correct in that assumption? So if we leave these judgments against her, she's still responsible for them.
Correct. I have a motion from Commissioner Karski to remove it from the person and the property. Do I have, I don't have a second. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, motion appears to die for lack of a second.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I appreciate Mr. Karski's motion, and I, I certainly, you know, if, if this money, this money is owed to the people of Minnehaha County, and I wonder if we couldn't ask the applicant to make us an offer, especially considering that they had enough money to buy drugs, but they don't have enough money to buy their, to pay their bills. I...
So...
Let me just also say, Cindy has her hand up, but in the past fifty percent has been a number that we often consider. And I, I would be happy to just leave the, the public defender charges on there and, and forgive the rest, but those are some of my thoughts.
Commissioner Heiburger?
If we let this go through, the house sale will go through, and we'll have property taxes next year. If we sit on it, she's gonna sit in the house for another year because she won't be able to sell it, and we'll have another year where we're gonna lose property taxes. If we leave the judgments against her, we can at least come back later and address those issues, whether we release the poor relief at some point, or we release some of it at some point. But at this point, if we just take it off the property, somebody gets a new house, we get property taxes next year, and we can deal with the rest of this money in the future. So I would make a motion that we remove it from the house only, and at this point, leave it against the petitioner, and we can deal with it later.
I'll second it, and if I could comment?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Karski?
We had a very, very similar one last week. In fact, and that was my motion, was to remove it from the house and leave it on the person, but we didn't do that then. I'm okay with doing that, because I wanted to do that last week. So I, I am in favor of this, but just saying, we're probably not being real consistent in the way we handle some of these. But I guess each case gets done on its own merits, so I, I get that, but...
Commissioner Barth?
I would just point out to Commissioner Karski that the recipient of benefits had passed away last week. The fact that the spouse still had him on their account is a different thing. But in this case, the sale isn't scheduled till the 31st, and we meet again next week. Maybe they could make us an offer.
Okay, Commissioner Heiburger?
One more comment. I would just comment by looking at the, at the narrative here, that this person doesn't have any money to offer, that there's no money.
Okay. Any other comments?
They will on November first.
Carol, good morning.
Thank you, Carol Muller, Commission Office. And the sheets that you're looking off of are, can be confusing to read. They're computer printouts. And I appreciate Melinda making her little notes and highlighting what those balances are. When it comes to the public defender expenses, I just wanted to point out that the expenses to that were a two-hundred-dollar bill, a bill for one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and eighty cents, and then one for eighty-four sixty. That largest bill, which is one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, was completely paid off.
That's right.
That was completely paid off. So the only outstanding public defender component is two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars out of about thirty-six-hundred dollars. And like I said, these, this sheet's confusing.
I'm holding out for two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars.
Thank you for that clarification. That is, that is, it is confusing, I would agree. So any further discussion? It's been lively so far, so Commissioner Heiburger?
I'll just throw in one more thought. I appreciate the clarification, because looking at this and not trying to total it all up, it looks like most of those causes were public defender costs, which they're not. They're poor relief costs, which normally we do forgive poor relief costs in, in a heavy case, so.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes four to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was four to one last week, too.
They're consistent. All right, this is our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that's not on our agenda, this is your opportunity. Seeing people leaving instead of mobbing the mic, we will go on to our regular business. So the next item is item ten, where we consider a motion to rescind a commission action taken at the October fifteenth, 2019 commission meeting declaring a highway department Polaris Ranger nine-hundred, unit number sixty-thirty, as surplus for sale. DJ Boothey?
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Last week, we requested a declaration of surplus for ten individual units, including the 2012 Polaris Ranger. After making that declaration, I became aware, some of our maintenance staff that hadn't previously used this piece of equipment, that they would benefit from the use of it. And so they requested that we keep this unit and allow them to use it. And so through some conversation in our department, we decided that that would be acceptable. And so finding out now the, the means to do that, we are requesting you to rescind the declaration to surplus the 2012 Polaris Ranger, unit number sixty-thirty. So the maintenance crew can, can continue to use it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Looks like you get the next several items, DJ, so moving on to item eleven?
All right, next item is requesting authorization for the chairperson to execute a design agreement with Banner Associates for the design of MC Project twenty-dash-zero-one. It's a Minnehaha County culvert replacement project. We have three different culverts in three different locations that we are requesting design services for replacement. One of them is at Wall Lake. One of them is just west of Highway eleven along the northern border of the county. And one of them is over on the eastern edge of the county, just north of County Highway one-thirty. All three of these culverts, we identified throughout the course of the summer of having damage due to some recent flooding and high, high flows. And so we are going to be completing the survey, hydraulics, design, and bidding services with this agreement. And the agreement was with Banner Associates for fifty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And I can stand by for any questions on this agreement.
Any questions for DJ?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? I'd just note that I had an opportunity visit with a Minnehaha County resident, rural resident, this past week and talk, they'd had some, there'd been some culverts that had been replaced out near their property, and just how tremendously appreciative they were, given all the rain that we've had, and what a great job it did keeping the water where it was supposed to be. So these are great projects. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to item twelve, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize chairperson to sign a right-of-way purchase agreement to acquire parcel land to rebuild Highway, County Highway one-ten.
Commissioners, again, with culvert replacements, next year, we're planning a number of different culvert replacements. One of them is on County Highway one-ten, and at this particular property location, we are replacing a culvert. And at this location, we don't have one hundred feet of right-of-way. And so in our negotiations with the adjacent landowner, we are purchasing ten additional feet of right-of-way along the, the length of their property in order to get the full right-of-way swath through there. The project is simply a culvert replacement scheduled for 2020, and, and, and they're agreeable to this, and so author, are requesting authorization for the chairperson to execute the right-of-way purchase agreement.
So moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to item twelve, which is consider a motion to approve and authorize the chairperson to sign a right-of-way purchase agreement. Oops, sorry. We're on, actually, item thirteen. Consider a motion to approve and authorize the chairperson to sign a right-of-way purchase agreements to acquire four parcels of land to rebuild County Highway one-forty-nine.
Commissioners, in 2020, we're expecting to start reconstructing County Highway one-forty-nine from County Highway one-twenty-two, which is the northern limits of where we completed the reconstructed, or reconstruction two years ago, up to the southern edge of the city of Colton, or the municipality of Colton. And it is several years away, but we are starting to work on the preliminary design and the right-of-way for this corridor. We have a lot of right-of-way issues along this corridor. Specifically, we have about forty-four parcels that are owned by twenty-four, twenty-five different landowners. We sent out letters a few weeks ago, the initial letters, saying that we are working on the design for a project and that we want to meet with these landowners and, and start negotiating right-of-way purchases. And we have met with these landowners, and they are agreeable to the negotiations, and we, we are requesting the chairperson to execute the right-of-way purchase agreements.
Any questions?
Move for approval to approve the right-of-way purchase?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that takes us to item 14, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Karski.
Met with Highway Super last Friday, went, kind of discussed things for, met for about an hour, I guess. I guess the big thing came out of that for me was we're gearing up for next year's construction season and we'll be seeing bidding activity and projects starting to be led, so getting ready to spend some money again. And then the second thing is, also had a Many Haha County Economic Development meeting. We meet monthly with the Lincoln County Economic Development Association and we're going to have our joint annual meeting on Thursday, November 7th, at Downtown Holiday Inn. All the commissioners received an invite if you'd like to attend. The Deputy Commissioner of the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Mary Laheca, I believe is her name, will be attending, so Makita and Lakita, it's, it's an interesting group and monthly meeting. I do make most of them, about 80% of them, I believe, and enjoy the information and appreciate being able to serve on that board and taking part in it. So just so you're aware, if you want to know more about what's going on, we do have an annual meeting Thursday, November 7th.
All right, thank you. Any other? Commissioner Barth?
I had a few interconnected meetings. East Dakota Water Development District, we approved some money to a professor at SDSU to look at finding ways to let the water soak into the ground rather than run off. There's some technologies that could be deployed. We talked quite a bit about flooding on a couple of lakes, including Lake Ponset, and how all these lakes are flowing in and it's not flowing out fast enough for folks. And we approved some money to some, a couple of small towns, Nunda and White, to study their drinking water and also their sanitary sewer. And one of those towns commented that they were unable to run a video camera through their sanitary sewer pipes because they're blocked. Well, just for the folks out here, we are south of those people, so if that stuff isn't being treated properly, it's coming our way. And so that's, that's good, good stuff there. Then we also talked about, at the Conservation District, Many Haha County Conservation District, we talked about water quite a bit, including the Renner Sanitary District, which more will be coming on that eventually. But the repercussions of high water this year, we're still feeling them and more action needs to be taken.
Thank you. Anything else? I just note that Commissioner Heiburger and I attended the MacArthur Safety and Justice Committee meeting last week, which is a kind of interdisciplinary committee, folks from the courts and from the State's Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office and the city. That is a group that's overseeing the grant money that we received from MacArthur and Erin Serska and her group have done great work tracking numbers and we consider, we continue to see very positive impact of some of the, the programs we've put in, the pre-trial program and, and other programs. And it's just been very encouraging to see that we have been able to, you know, move the dial a little bit to keep the jails full of the people that were, you know, that are a danger to the community in jail and the other folks at home and, and with their families and at work and that, that good work continues. So I thought that was a very helpful meeting, so. And the only other thing that I would note is that we had our, we meet about twice a month on the jail progress with the contractor and the folks working on that project. That project continues to go very smoothly. It's on track to be done on time and, and under budget, so it's been a good group.
I would just throw onto that jail committee thing, there was a lot to do at the very beginning, a lot to do. And now it's flowing very easily without as, as great an effort. I mean, we were having three, four-hour meetings, traveling to look at jails and other places, et cetera, and now it's, it's really going smoothly.
Yeah, which is a function of the, the good legwork that was put in at the beginning and being able to put together a really good team. So we're all reaping the benefits of that right now. All right, anything else? If not, takes us to item 15, new business? Any new business? If not, item 16, old business. Is there any old business today? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to recess the Many Haha County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll recess for, oh, why don't you give us 10 minutes?